Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabados of Delphi, together with my co-host Mark Ron, a state-wide news service and J-BizTechs Valley dot com.
Well Rabbi, you know, education is very important to the people in Jewish community. And with us today, we have the Executive Director of the New York State School Boards Association, Tim Kremer. So, welcome to The Jewish View once again. You were here last year, so welcome back.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you Rabbi for having me.
There's always more education. Something new in education.
We're always learning, you know?
Just maybe start off from the basics of what is your job as a school board association?
Okay. Well, we are an organization that is a statewide membership organization. There are approximately 720 boards of education in this state, and about 90% of them are members of our organization. We have one office located in Latham, New York, which is just north of the Capitol. Have about 55, 56 people on staff. And we have a group that centered around advocacy work, lawyers and lobbyists. We have a whole information group that publishes information, puts a lot of stuff on internet, electronic communications. We have a large media relations presence, do a lot of research and marketing. We have a training group. We have everything from a large annual convention down to individual school board retreats. We'll do about 85 of those a year. And then we have a group of consultants who work on a variety, a mishmash of different things on behalf of boards of education. Our job primarily is to see to it that these people who were elected locally to govern these public education institutions have the information and the training and the skills that they need to make smart local decisions. We don't want to tell them necessarily what the decision always is, but we want to make sure they have everything they need, all the equipment, everything they need to be equipped to make smart local decisions.
And how long have you been in your position?
I've been in my position almost 17 years.
Wow. Time flies. I remember your predecessor, Lou Grummett, right?
Lou Grummett was my predecessor years ago. And in fact, when he was here in New York as Executive Director, I was in Ohio. And I was almost 20 years with the Ohio School Board Association. So, I'm coming up, I think, on my 36th anniversary of this business.
Well, you started when you were three or four.
I'd like to think that.
You know, like, we've had, again, Mark and I have many, many, either politicians or their local officials. And one of the things that they do say is getting someone on the school board is very difficult because it's no pay, and it's a lot of work, a lot of effort. And I mean, what kind of quality people are there? It's just like, well, I, you know, PTA, I'm a parent, I'd like to see my school board. They probably don't have any education background.
Yeah.
And skills. So then you're starting from scratch. You know, here's some raw person that's obviously a good person, they want to volunteer, they want to help.
Yep.
But what do they know about how to run any school system?
Recruiting candidates for the school boards. Do you do a class in that?
We don't actually ourselves recruit, but we do give people advice as to what they might be looking for in a school board member.
That's what I mean, like a class of...
What we've learned through kind of our research is that a lot of people, if you tap them on the shoulder and you say, hey, you know what? You might be good at this. Nine, like, three quarters of the time, people say, okay, I'll give it a shot. Now, they do have to run, and they might not win. But we come from all walks of life. There are a lot of people who are actually professional educators, be they teachers or school administrators, who are also on school boards. And you can't be on the school board where you actually work, but you could be on the school board in the community down the road from where you do work. So that exists. There are a lot of people who are related to people who are in school boards, excuse me, who work in the school district. So they're on the school board, and somebody within their family works within the school district. And that sometimes causes us a little bit of anxiety now and then.
That's how you get to know the inside of what's happening when you can't be undercover boss and you can't go see what they're doing.
That's right.
You know, you just have to, you know, you have someone on the inside telling you.
We do get a little of that. And then we do have the people who, as you suggest, this is all new to them. They don't have a background, a professional background in public education at all. And actually, that diversity at the table is really our strength. I want to have a school board that represents the community as far and wide as we can. If we all looked exactly alike, thought like exactly alike, believed the same things, came from the same neighborhood, were approximately the same age, the same gender, honestly, I don't think we would have that diversity that we need in order to properly represent a diverse community.
So let me ask you about the makeup of the state legislature. Assemblywoman Pat Fahy used to be a school board member.
Correct.
Former Senator C. Kaczik, she was from the Schenectady County area. She was a school board member. Do you have people besides Pat Fahy who are currently in the state legislature who used to be school board members?
John D. Francisco, who is a Republican Senator from Syracuse, used to be on the Syracuse Board of Education. Brian Kolb, who is the Assembly Minority Leader, Republican, from Canadagua, former school board member.
That's when they had one-room schoolhouses back then.
Hey, 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 you said that, I'd be.
I know that. Because they've been in the legislature 35, 40 years.
They've been around a long time. And, you know, interestingly enough, Comptroller De Napoli.
Yes.
Was a school board member from Mineola, and he was elected to the school board when he was 18 years old.
Okay, so, but are there any more relevant or closely aligned?
You just named.
That was it, it's Pat Fahy.
Pat Fahy.
That's it?
No, you know, you catch me a little cold here. I mean, I'd have to think about it.
I figured you had a list.
No, I don't have a list. But it is interesting, when I do go meet with people at the Capitol, I oftentimes learn for the first time myself.
Oh, really?
That's why I said, I once was on the school board.
Someone's got to do research for you before you...
Or my father, or my mother, or somebody. Well, it's one of those things that doesn't necessarily come up.
But like you say, it's almost a thankless job. I mean, so sometimes when you say that you tap someone on the shoulder, they're running unopposed.
Well, well, not necessarily. That varies dramatically. You will have districts where you are running unopposed, and incumbent continues on without any opposition. We've even had situations where we didn't have enough candidates for the number of open seats. But that's unusual. Typically, you do have opposition, there are more than, more candidates than open seats. And, you know, I hear people oftentimes refer to school board members as either volunteers and the thankless job. And I have to tell you, I would like to correct the record.
Okay.
These are elected officials. In fact, they're the largest body of elected officials in the state. And they volunteer their time, significant amount of time.
Right.
But they're elected officials, they're not volunteers, number one. And number two, they would tell you...
They're unpaid elected officials.
They're unpaid elected officials. But I think that, which I think adds to the purity of our mission. But the other thing I would tell you is, I don't think it's a thankless job.
Okay.
I hear from them all the time, and many of them who run again and again and again, would tell you, this is the best thing I've ever done. I love my community, I believe in public education, I believe I'm giving back in an appropriate, honorable way.
And it's in their heart and soul. And that's why they feel like it's not thankless, because it's in their heart and soul.
You think about this, you think about this community, and the fact that you are trying to make sure that the children within this community have an opportunity to have education that's going to prepare them for whatever is next in life, that has huge meaning for a community.
Yes.
To the families that live in the community, the taxpayers in that community. It's very important work. And I think that, once you get into it, and it's daunting at first, no doubt, you're kind of wondering, what did I get myself into? But I think it kind of grows on you. And I think most school board members would tell you that they are very happy they did that.
Teacher principal evaluations, that's been in the news lately.
Yeah.
Tell us what your association position is with that, and what your feelings and thoughts are about that?
You know, this whole thing came about when there was this federal, new federal program called Race to the Top. And it said that you're going to have to have a way in which you link teacher and principal evaluations to standardized test scores of your students. That changed everything. And it was all linked to a Common Core curriculum and high-stakes standards, et cetera, et cetera. And I won't bore you with all those details, but it became a very controversial thing. Every school district was forced to negotiate a new teacher and principal evaluation and have that submitted to the state for approval in a set period of time by a certain deadline, or they might jeopardize their state education aid. That was a whole complication unto itself. Well, today, there has been some pretty sharp criticism about the validity of those evaluations. You've probably have seen where the Common Core-aligned tests for English language arts and math that are administered to grades three through eight, on average, kids are proficient at, I'm going to say, about 31%. Pretty low.
Right.
But the teachers.
That's right.
Have a highly effective or effective rating, somewhere in the mid-90s.
That's right.
And the governor has been very vocal about pointing out, how can this be?
Well, he mentioned it in the State of the State.
He does, and he's continuing to. So now, in his State of the State, where he's come forward with this package of reforms, he has suggested, we got to completely do something different with this annual professional performance review, these teacher evaluations, because they're not credible.
And do you agree with that?
We agree that they need to be fixed.
But do you agree that they're not credible?
I do. I do believe that the system we have put together is one that is being kind of gamed. The link to the tests, that people have doubts about these tests, would tell you that that foundation is not very strong. These tests were created to measure student achievement, student progress. They were not necessarily created to evaluate teachers. And so they're being probably misused in that regard. The negotiated portion of the annual professional performance review, those were rushed, they were caught, they were forced into play because of this rush to make sure you are eligible for your state aid. And I don't think they were given a thoughtful approach. And then you have this, what is 60% of the evaluation, which people have openly said, we're not putting as much thought and time and effort into that. A, we might not have the time to do it because it's so time-consuming. It requires two observations in every classroom, every teacher, very time-consuming. Plus, I think they realize that it's going to be difficult to do this right and fair. And so I think they're gaming that 60% a little bit by being a little generous on that side of it, knowing that these test score sections of the APR may not be positive.
You say the Common Core could be, like you say, the evaluation of the teachers may be a little bit skewed. But on the other hand, maybe the Common Core is not the right kind of test.
Yeah.
I mean, is that, is it a proper test? I just know, my mother was a kindergarten teacher, and she remembers that, you know, teachers have lunchroom and they talk, and they said, well, they says, they just gave us some test from somewhere, and I don't remember exactly what it was, but just evaluate the kids, and in smart kids, you can get dejected. You know, you're used to getting 90s and hundreds, and now you don't know, here's a test, and you can't even figure out half the test. She says, who wrote this test? You know, I mean, who came from it? So that's why, I guess, I'm always thinking, you know, maybe the test is a terrible test. Maybe they're not making it well.
They might, I don't know to what extent it's a terrible test, but your mother's reaction is not uncommon. It is, they changed the standards. They basically said that what our kids need to know and be able to do has to be more rigorous than what we've been doing to date. Whether you agree with that or not is the foundation of this whole Common Core debate. But if you go with the fact that these standards, these Common Core standards are legitimate, and those are indeed the things we would hope our kids would know and be able to do at certain levels in their academic history, okay, fine. But what we did is we kind of rushed things through. We put these standards in place, we did not align them to the curriculum well, we did not make sure that the students and the teachers had the preparation to understand what these standards were all about.
The rollout was faulty.
The rollout was faulty. You then also had these evaluations done rapidly without clear understanding of what the curriculum was and how it aligned to the standards. And there were all these links done too rapidly. If they had rolled this out over a three- or four- or five-year period of time, I think we would have been fine. But it was all done at once, and it caused this huge fear. The teachers in particular, and the New York State United teachers specifically, really have been pushing back on this.
So they're on the opposite end of the spectrum from you, I guess?
Not really anymore. I mean, there was a time when I would say, we were probably more supportive of what was the reforms that were coming forward.
Than they were.
Than they were.
Okay.
But as we've gotten to this place today, we're starting to realize that the reforms, as they were rolled out, was not done well. We want to fix it. We don't want to throw them all out.
And I said, agrees with that too?
I would tell you, they're on a different path.
Okay.
And their definition of fixing it, I'm sure, would differ from mine.
All right, so let me ask you about, that's for sure, about the five-year probation for new teachers?
Yeah, this is another reform that the governor included in this package. So he put forward his budget this year, and as you well know, he is, here in New York, the governor has figured out that they put all sorts of policy initiatives and attached them to their budget. And the legislature is pretty much handcuffed into accepting these policy initiatives. They can vote it up or down, but they don't have the ability to change it, except through some negotiations, all done behind closed doors. This is one of the elements that he put in here, is that I want to make sure that rather than us have a three-year probationary period, which has been the tradition, that it be extended to five years. I would tell you that we would be supportive of that. We could see where there are instances where our teachers are not, we're not ready, as a board of education, to make a decision about a lifelong contract, tenure, on somebody who has been a teacher for only three years, and maybe has done fair, but not outstanding. Maybe needs a little more time. Now, what the governor has also linked in here is he wants five consecutive effective evaluations linked in there.
That's how the teacher evaluation part connects with tenure.
So he said the five-year probationary period, which made some sense to us, but then he's kind of taken it, he's doubling down with, you have to have five effective evaluations in order to get tenure. We're not, or other rewards, certification and things like that, we're not sure if that's fair. I mean, you're going to have instances where, as a teacher, you may have a really good year, and then you might have a year that's not so good.
Right.
We all do. Particularly when you have children coming into your classroom, some of whom can be very challenging.
Right.
And you're not always going to have these like Wobegone kids walking in every day. So, there might be that kid, or those sets of children who really challenge you. Other things can happen as well. So, we are not as convinced that the five-year consecutive evaluation is the way to go, but a five-year probationary period for newly minted teachers, that makes some sense.
I think we've seen a pattern with the governor's negotiation skills. And if he gets half a loaf, he says it's better than none. And if he only, if he didn't double down, he wouldn't have gotten the point, you know, to the point where they're at. So, he, you know, shoots for the moon, and if he gets half, that's better than if he just proposed the half a loaf. And then he would have gotten only a quarter.
Well, you're, you're very wise to say that. You know, a lot of people whom I represent have been just fraught over the fact that he's gone forward with this very long list of education reforms. And he has said, I am going to give you X number of dollars in additional state aid if you don't accept all my reforms. If you do, I will reward you by giving you a much larger number in additional state aid. This is classic negotiation.
Yes.
And he's done an extraordinarily good job at it.
And it's very good for him in that he can say, well, look, I'm a conciliator, I'm not a, you know, I don't have a dictatorship type of mentality, and it's good for the school boards because you can go back to your people and say, look what we did.
I think he would tell you...
We were effective.
I think he would like to think of himself as a change agent.
Of course.
And he knows that the people who he is trying to influence oftentimes are intransient. They are, it's hard to move these folks.
Yeah.
And so he's doing it, playing a hardball approach.
Right, right.
I understand why he's doing it. I think he kind of goes a little too far on some of these instances, but I assume you're right that, at some point, he'll back off some of this stuff and get the most important things he wants.
That's right.
You know, you've been around, like you say, for many years. Do you think that teachers are better qualified today? Do they need a master's? I mean, the olden, olden days, I don't know how far back, they didn't need a master's.
Right.
So, would you think they're better qualified to come into the classroom?
I think they're well-qualified. It's interesting you ask that question, because there has been research that suggests that those teachers who have a master's degree, the students that they are teaching fare no better than those teachers that have just a bachelor's degree. There is some, I don't know if this is some groundbreaking study, but I have read that before. I would prefer that I have a very well-educated teacher. I like the fact that the teachers here in New York are expected to have a master's degree. It means that there is a significant commitment to their profession, ongoing professional development requirements. This is a profession that does change more rapidly than we want to give it credit for sometimes.
Wanted to ask you about an issue that's very important to the Jewish community and parochial schools, and public schools will benefit from this also, is the education tax credit.
Yeah.
Now, last year, I asked the governor, when he unveiled the budget and it got passed, and he had the news coming, I said, well, what happened with this? He goes, well, there just wasn't enough money in the budget for this. I didn't know it took money for tax credit, but he was very, very short in his answer, so he didn't really explain what he meant by that. Are you, as an association, in favor of this education tax credit?
No.
Or, no, you're not.
Therein lies the rub, what the governor said. This is actually money that comes from the state to reimburse those who donate their funds to a private school, a charter school, or could be a public school. Our expectations are that the public schools, that is the sweetener put in there for people like me.
Yeah.
That the likelihood of us attracting significant donations not going to be high in most communities in the state. There will be certainly some communities where they might have a foundation, or they have some sort of other, and they have a citizenry of some means that does make donations to their public schools. That does exist today, and that would be welcome, I'm sure.
Naming rights for the school.
Yeah, we don't like that.
You know, the Neil Gull of Lincoln High School.
But the, what our concern is, is there are going to be more incentives to take children out of public school, go to private school, which is a parent's right to do. Don't object to that at all. But now the state's going to subsidize that decision, and we don't believe that that is something that they should be doing. We have public schools, we provide a high-quality educational program. You want to send your child to a private school or a charter school? Go for it, but you pay for it, don't expect us to all subsidize you for that.
But they're also paying the school taxes. So they're also paying for the public schools, as well as then the private schools. So shouldn't the burden be sort of minimized somehow, mitigated, where at least the tax credit, I mean, there's only so much you could take off on a tax credit.
Well, it's high. That's the, that is what has been, I would tell you, is one of the main concerns.
Devils in the details.
I mean, we fundamentally are not supportive of a tax credit, but then, to make it such that it is either somewhere, you know, the Senate passed one version, the governor's promoting another version, and they're between 75% and 90% of what I have donated is credited back to me. So this is a very high, very significant credit. If it was something that was smaller than that, it would be more tolerable.
More palatable, yeah.
Yeah, I would think.
Well, maybe that's negotiations, that's where it comes down to.
Well, it might be. We're not advocating for that.
I understand.
I'm not trying to cross that line, I would tell you. But one of the most egregious pieces of it is the amount of the credit itself.
Right, okay. So, the East Ramapo School District, there seems to be a quandary going on there. Could you explain that a little?
Well, I would expect your viewers might know something about this. Here's a school district that...
In Rockland County?
In Rockland County, that has, I'm going to say, within the county, within the school district are approximately, and I'm just estimating now, about 27,000 students. Somewhere around 18 to 20 attend private yeshivas, and the rest go to public schools. Many of those children are either from Haitian or Hispanic, African-American descent, those who attend the public school.
Oh, okay. I was going to say.
Yeah. Not the yeshiva population. No. But you can see it's set up for some tension over race and religion and ethnicity. The school board that was elected by a majority of the people who live in that school district are either, I don't know what the breakdown is now, but I think, out of seven or nine members, all but two are Orthodox or Hasidim. They have made some decisions, some policy decisions, some resource management decisions that have been called into question by the Commissioner of Education. And eventually, the governor, and it became very tense. The commissioner kept saying, you're doing things wrong. They would say, we're not, and there was a lot of fighting back and forth. The governor finally stepped in and sent a gentleman named Hank Greenberg into the school district to do an investigation. Hank Greenberg came back and said that there needs to be a level of oversight put forward, a monitor, if you will, to monitor the decisions of the board and the superintendent. So, that bill, a bill to do that, has now been introduced in both houses. You have Carlucci, who's an independent Democratic Conference Senator. You have...
Ellen Jaffe.
Ellen Jaffe.
Okay.
And Zabrowski's involved. I don't know where everybody...
Ken Zabrowski.
Right. I don't know the numbers or anything like that in front of me. But that bill has been introduced that would provide for a monitor in East Ramapo only. It's not a statewide bill, just for them. There are some sunsetting provisions and things of that nature. We've taken a position of no objection, which is, you know, this is a situation where somebody from the outside is going to come in and sit at the side of our board, an elected board.
Right.
And decide whether or not they've made some smart decisions, and has the power to override them.
Oh.
Now, we're giving some hope that maybe, this is such a...
A new, one-charged territory?
Well, it's such a, it's such a highly-charged situation, that maybe having that person who comes in, you know, I'm going to call it the adult in the room.
Yeah.
Who has high level of integrity, who is looking out for the best interests of all the children, who can provide smart recommendations.
Who pays this monitor?
The monitor's going to be paid for by the state.
Okay.
In theory, you know, all of this has yet to be determined. This is a bill that has been proposed and introduced, and has not been passed yet.
Okay, but it's, and what do you, does the governor's office support this? Is there...
I assume so. I have not, I couldn't tell you for sure, but the fact is, it emulated what the governor's investigator, Hank Greenberg, had said they were looking for. So my, he probably has spoken on this, I'm just forgetting whether or not he has said, yes, that's what I wanted.
Okay.
But he may not have taken a position on this particular bill yet.
Well, Hank Greenberg is an Albany resident, and he works at Greenberg-Trowaring. He's a managing partner, he's a member of Temple Israel. So, I know who he is, I know who he's talking about. And, yeah, he was involved with the state fair also, and it's a very...
His report came out, and people were pretty respectful of that report. And said, you know, he did a thorough job, it's a credible recommendation and such. Interestingly, this bill, and one of our cues, you know, the East Ramapo Board of Education is a member of mine.
Right.
So, you know, I'm getting my cue here from my member, and my member was not stating an objection to this. Do they love the idea of having a monitor? No. I think what their hope is, is that eventually, there will be additional resources that would accompany this.
I see.
But that has not yet been determined.
Okay.
Wrapping it up.
So, do you have anything else that you want to add that we didn't touch on?
Just one more minute.
Okay, well, I would tell you that the things we've talked about are very high on our list of key issues. The state budget is where we're at right now. And the one thing that has been most difficult for the boards who my recommend, represent, is that the governor did not release the runs, as we call them, estimates of how the state aid would be distributed. So we are putting together our budgets, our tax cap levies, in the dark. And this is not fair, it's no way to run a railroad, but we are having to go forth despite this dramatic limitation.
In all the years, I've never heard of school runs not being put out there and then In all the years, I've never heard of school runs not being put out there and then negotiated.
Yeah. It's bizarre. It is part of this negotiating strategy that the governor, this very strong-armed negotiating strategy that the governor employs.
Wow, okay, well, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much then for being, you know, Jewish education is like Mark said at the beginning of your show, is so important to keep up the good work in educating the students of New York State.
And you do likewise. Thank you.
Much success.